I'm going to call the meeting to order. Welcome to the July 16th Durango City Council Meeting. I want to thank all of you who are joining us and thank you for those of you joining us live and tuning in on DGUB, we appreciate having you. I want to start by reminding the citizens of Durango that as a council, we have adopted the Civility First pledge program created through our Durango Community Relations Commission, which is a program that promotes and encourages social harmony where everybody is treated with respect and civility. And as a council, we operate under those, under that oath and conduct our meetings accordingly. And I'd like to actually also take this moment to commend our council. We just had some very difficult conversations as we often do ourselves and they were treated and we, I think, had a very civil and respectful conversation and I really appreciate that. So, thank you to our council. And with that, if anyone would like to speak during public participation, if you could please sign up in the sheets below. And Ms. Phillips, may we please have a roll call?
Counselor Baxter?
Here.
Counselor Patine?
Here.
Counselor Nosworthy?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Broke?
Here.
And Mayor Yusuf?
City Council, do we have any actual or perceived conflicts of interest tonight?
We actually may. So, item, can I put my glasses on so I can read it, please? Item 5.5, Discussion on Possible Action Regarding an Imp lied Consent Agreement for Water Service to 1320 CR 215, the Hermison Property?
Yes.
It was mentioned in the documentation that Tailwind may be a leasing of that piece of property and so I need to disclose, and it's just so ironic because I said that this might be a conflict of interest issue during my campaign, that my husband is involved in consulting with Tailwind and is on the board and also has a minority ownership in that company. However, being that they are a potential leasing and not actually currently leasing and that anyone else could lease into the other buildings, I'm not sure that there's a material conflict there, but I'll leave that up to council to decide.
Can we have an opinion from our attorney, please?
Well, the only thing I've mentioned is that the Code of Ethics does state that anyone who has an interest in an activity or anything coming before a council shouldn't vote on that item. And the code specifically defines an interest to include a position as a Board of Director. And so, an interest of a spouse is the same effectively as an interest of a counselor. So, I think the only question is how close the link, you know, I think that, my understanding is that there are, I don't know anything about the status of the lease negotiations, I have no idea. But, you know, if Tailwind is likely to benefit from in any way from this activity by the city, then I think it makes, you know, then it certainly at least raises the specter of a conflict.
Thank you.
It'd be easy not to vote on it as a consent agenda. I think we can remove it, I guess?
Yeah, that was, I spoke earlier about this and that would probably be the way to do it, would be to remove it. And then I would leave if you so decided that that was the case during the discussion and the vote on that particular item.
That way, we don't have to do marriage counseling.
I'm not married to you.
No. No. But, thank you.
Dean, you talked about us being a family.
I know. We are.
This was good. Okay.
I make a motion to withdraw 5.5, Discussion on Possible Action Regarding implied Consent on 413200, County Road 213.
Second.
Further discussion? Okay, we will...
I'm guessing that's with the intent that I will recuse myself during that conversation?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to clear that.
I was going to wait until we were doing our consent agenda, until the time on the agenda to do that, but I think it's fine to go ahead and do that now. Unless we have other items, that's okay. But, go ahead.
Counselor Nosworthy?
Uh, yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Broke?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Abstain.
Counselor Patine?
Yes.
Mayor Yusuf?
Yes. All right, we have two presentations tonight. The first is from La Plata Economic Alliance.
Hi. Hi.
Please join us at the podium.
Oh, really?
Yeah, sorry, because you're on TV.
Hi, okay.
And state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Emily Meisner. My home address is 668 County Road 224 in this lovely town of Durango. I am the interim executive director for the La Plata County Economic Alliance. I'm here today for two reasons. I wanted you to get a face with a name, number one, for some of you who do not know me. Some of you do know me from my history of owning my own business for the last 20 years that I successfully sold in April. So, I have come on as the interim ED for the alliance and I am helping to get the wheels back on the bus and start proceeding forward. We had a board retreat and I wanted to share with you the outcome of the retreat. We have made some strategic goals for the year that we plan to absolutely execute and complete. One of them is affordable housing. I don't mean low-income housing or high-income housing, I mean the middle grade. And we are going to help our neighboring communities, Bayfield and Ignacio, to infiltrate some of this affordable housing in any way we can and to investigate how we can assist them in the best way that we can. The next strategic plan that we have is to start building public and private partnerships to help development move forward. To give you an idea, there are some things shaking up on La Posta Road, which you are all aware of. We are trying to gain partnerships with the private landowners there to help the process, to try to help everybody to move forward for the greater good. It's not just in La Posta, we're doing that all over the county with the other cities that we have and with the county itself. So, we are building those relationships stronger and stronger for the greater good. And our last one, and I don't know why, it just, oh, no, no call. We are also looking into reevaluating the need for light industrial and where might that be? And where could it make sense? And try to help the process. We will be working with both the city planning and the county planning department to try to help the process and try to help what we can do to further the development. We understand the need in our community to diversify our economic drivers and we are dedicated to try to assist any way we can to help that happen. We are in on some of the discussions about the URA, we are learning a lot about that. We would like to participate with that in any way that this council and the city of Durango sees fit. We can help attract businesses, we can help infiltrate some of the infrastructure, we might even be able to help negotiate some land purchases and what have you due to membership within this organization. One thing that I find in this organization that works better than anybody is the constant people connect that you have within this organization of making things happen. So, I just want you to know that we now have three wheels on the bus. We are moving forward while our board carries the other fourth leg and we have some great plans coming down the pipe. And I kind of want to know what you all need from the alliance to be sure that what we're doing feeds what you're doing, because as much as we can work together, the better the outcome is for all.
That's great. Well, I'm really excited about your strategic goals. Really nice to see some specific tangible goals and real needs, you know, that we're noticing here in our community. I would love it if you could expand your affordable housing to also Durango.
That's a given, honestly.
Okay, is it?
That's a given.
Okay.
And what I mean by affordable housing is that 3 to 450 range. That's where we seem to see that the lack of that kind of workforce is as well. We're hearing that from multiple employers. And so, we're just trying to identify all the different areas that we can fit in that range. The most space that we have is in Bayfield and Ignacio. However, Three Springs is already filling part of that goal and we're trying to look around and see who's developing, where else could we maybe put that? It needs to be an infill all over this county, not just Durango, not just Bayfield or Ignacio, but we never want to discount it, they're a viable option. So...
Thank you, I love these ideas, it's in line with a good vision for our whole region.
Yes, thank you, I appreciate that.
Emily, thank you as well for coming out. I chatted last week with the team and council members in reporting, one of the other things, you talked about planning and county and city planning and you linked it with the light industrial park, but one of the things I think we also talked about was looking at how to overcome some barriers or roadblocks to development.
Would you like me to speak a little more about that, what we're doing?
Yeah, that would be helpful.
So, what we have, we have met with Scott Shine and Kevin, actually, and identified that some of the businesses that have recently put new infrastructure in or opened a business in an old location or what have you, that their common theme seems to be the process is so painful. Well, what is it about the process that's so painful? Is it that our occupant didn't have enough information to have all their ducks in a row? What is it? So, we've agreed that we're going to go out and talk to some of the businesses who are going through these struggles currently or have just recently been through them, identify some issues. We're going to come back with the issue and some ideas of a solution and then give it to the planning department and see if we can't come up with a collaborative tool that might work. They seem to be very open and very willing to constructive criticism. I feel like we can be a good resource for the city of Durango. Let me share one other thing that we're doing with the city of Durango that I'm very excited about. At the economic summit this year, the economic alliance is working directly with the planning department to make a tri-fold brochure that is going to tell the good stories of what the city of Durango has done for businesses to help them get into business. The alliance is going to pay for that. We are sending our marketing person to your planning department because part of the stigma that the planning department has is the only thing out there is negative. They have many great stories. One of them being the Turgatory Building and how they were able to work and co-op about the parking issue. Nobody knows that story. So, we are going to try to help the planning department, number one, to give out the good stories and put out the good stories out there in the winds for the city of Durango so that maybe we can change the attitude that the future customer walks in the door with.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, we certainly commend you for that effort because...
Thank you.
We hear a lot of those negative comments, but we all know, being on council, that there's a lot of positives that go through that.
But, nobody hears.
And we get to see them every day, there's a lot of projects that get approved that are done very effectively and efficiently, so thanks for doing that, it's great.
Yeah, and we have great buy-in from Kevin and Scott and they are going to work with us really well. What our plan is, is to come up with this tri-fold piece of material, we're going to roll it out for the summit, they're going to have a table there and discuss it in one-on-one with the bigger shakers and movers in Durango. And then you're going to have that piece of material to hand out to future customers and go, "Just want to show you what we can do."
That's great.
And so, hopefully, that will start the turn of the negativity and let's get some positive information out there. The trickle-down effect of that could be amazing.
That's excellent. I want to thank you for stepping in as interim and we really appreciate it. You've been with the alliance for how long now on the board?
Six years.
Six years. I thought it was even longer because you were, yeah, you've been a member for a long time and you've contributed a lot.
Yes.
So, thank you so much, also as a business owner, so you bring a lot to the table. And can you update us on the search, real quick?
Yes, I can. Currently, we hired a firm called The Pace Firm and they are actively searching across the country for someone who might be a good fit. They are supposed to have some finalists to us by the end of July, first week of August. They should get it narrowed down to four individuals. The board has asked me to go ahead and throw my name in the hat and so I have enlisted with The Pace, so I will be a candidate. They will narrow it down to five candidates and then the board will interview them and get them down to two. And then we have an interview committee, which Ron is part of, that will interview the last two and advise the board on their final selection.
Excellent.
Our goal is to have an offer on the table by the end of August.
Excellent, thank you very much. Any further questions from council?
Well, thank you, Emily.
Thanks for the presentation.
One thing that I didn't get, are we doing what you think we need to? Is there anything you want to add? And please know that Barbara's on our board and we're going to send information back with her for you on a constant basis.
I think the direction you're heading is perfectly in alignment with what we'd like to see.
I'd really like to see what you're here, yeah. We'll stay in touch and we'll stay in touch with Barbara as well.
Awesome.
So, thank you.
Thank you for your time and thank you for your continued support of the economic development.
Thanks for presenting to us, appreciate it. Our second presentation is our monthly financial report.
So, this is a new agenda item that we are adding to our monthly report, correct?
Correct.
We do this monthly.
Yep.
To keep council and the community up to date and informed on our financial-related issues.
Absolutely. So, good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council Members. As the mayor just stated, we're, I'm going to start trying to get a monthly financial report in front of council at the second meeting, depending on timing of when we get the month closed, but we're going to shoot for that second meeting of every month to have these reports out for you guys. So, diving into numbers, so you're going to see lots of numbers tonight because it is a financial management report, so we'll start with the general fund. General fund revenues currently are about 3.4% above 2018. We've collected about 44.3% of our budgeted revenue numbers for 2019. The largest increase that we see are transfers from other funds, that increase from 2018 is about 71%. If we remember in the budget process and those new councils, I think we've discussed as well, we did a cost allocation plan in 2018 to redistribute those fees, administration fees that are charged to the enterprise funds and reshuffled some staffing from enterprise funds to the general fund and we're paying those back through those transfers from those funds. You can also look at use tax. Use tax is broken down into three components right now, the building permit use tax is down about 6.6% from last year. I think we had some large buildings a year ago that were in the pipeline early in the year that we have not seen yet in 2019. Vehicle use tax is up 23.7%, so that's the tax you pay when you go to license your vehicle in the city. Other taxes and franchise fees right now are showing down about 5.6% from 2018. That's mainly because of timing on some receipts from the county on joint sales tax. If we would have gotten June's in on time, we would have been probably flat in that number. Intergovernmental grants or intergovernmental revenues, the grant revenues, those come and go as grants are available to us. In early 2018, we got a large CDVG grant revenue that came in, we have not seen that yet as of 2019. We do have a large grant with them as well that we pass through to the homes fund that we should be getting that revenue sooner than later. Fines and forfeits, although it's a small dollar amount that we collect, we are currently down about 26%. And the main reason for that is we're down seven officers in the police department, so those traffic tickets aren't being written because we don't have the staffing to often staff traffic control and so we're reactive instead of proactive. So, those revenues coming through our court are down because we are down those officers. So, those are the biggest highlights on the general fund revenues. Moving to the general fund expenditures, we've spent about 45.5% of the budget so far through June 30th. It's real in line with what we spent in 2018, we actually have spent about $9,228 more in the first six months of 2019 than we did in 2018. As you can see in the blue columns, that's 2019, there's a handful of departments that have spent or divisions that have spent over 50% of their budget already. Most of those like finance, information services, city clerk's office, we have large software maintenance that's due at the beginning of the year or subscriptions that are due at the beginning of the year. Same with the city council budget, we do have some, all of the citywide subscriptions and memberships such as like CML, the alliance are all in that city council budget and those are paid for the first part of the year as well. So, you'll see those expenditures slowing down as we move through the rest of the year. As we look at these expenditures, we don't, I have not been made aware of anything large coming through in the next couple of months. Operationally, the directors are really good about staying within their appropriation level and making those adjustments within their division if they're just line items. They often, the only time we really come back for appropriations, as I'll show you later, are for additional grant revenues, if an emergency happens or we have a capital type item that we did not have in the budget before, we want to make sure council's okay with us buying it, such as a new vehicle or something of that nature. Just to kind of graphically put those monthly expenditures for the first six months, the revenues and expenditures on the same chart with a five-year average. So, as you can see, the ups and downs for the five-year average really look similar to what we're spending monthly right now. There aren't a lot of deviations, we always spend more in January and it seems like quarterly payments are due in April and so you can see those bumping up and down as we progress through the year. So, looking at the general fund fund balance, this chart depicts the general fund for the, since 2015, that fund balance in the five different categories that we, that fund balance is broken into. So, we have the non-spendable, the restricted, the committed, the assigned and the unassigned. So, you can see those going through the years, what those look like. If you look at the bottom of the screen, the reserve equals the unassigned, assigned and the committed all together, that's our reserve that we consider the 15% of our operating expenditures. So, if you look at 2018, that 15% was about 5.7 million. The reserve available above the policy at the end of December 2018 was 106,446 or 0.3% of those expenditures. So, as we've been talking, as we've talked about that structural issue that we continue to talk about in the general fund, those are the issues we're trying to solve. How do we increase the fund balance above what we're, the reserve and our requirements that we have? Right now, looking at the year-end estimate for 2019, I have not received detailed estimates back from the departments yet, that comes with their budget submission at the end of this month, but from what I'm looking at, we're looking at about 1.2% of operating expenditures, which will increase that to about 500,000 above our reserve. But, we will have better numbers as we work through the year in the budget process. Going a little deeper into sales use lodger's tax. So, as you know, right now, as I report through June 30th, our sales tax rate is 3%. As of July 1st, that increased to 3.5%, but you won't see those until August. So, they're collecting right now, they don't remit them until August 20th, so you won't see that change until the August financial management report. So, of that 3%, 2% goes, sales and use tax goes to the general fund for general purposes, a half a percent goes to the 2015 sales tax fund, a quarter percent goes to the 2005 open space parks and trails fund and another quarter percent goes to the 2005 capital improvement funds. Moving to the middle of the screen, use tax again is 3%, it's the same as the sales tax rate. Through June 2019, we're up 6.5% in use tax. Those collections are made up of those three different categories, the building permits, businesses pay sales tax or use tax on sales tax returns and the vehicle use tax. So, building permits make up about 37% of that revenue, 24% comes in from the businesses paying use tax on something that they don't pay tax at a store and 39% is the vehicle use tax. Moving over to the right is lodger's tax, we're currently running about 0.8% over 2018. So, it's been kind of up and down, a couple of months we've been down, a couple of months we're up, kind of all over the board right now. But, as you can see, we're moving into our largest months in the next three or four months in lodger's tax. So, hopefully, we'll have some strong summer season and shoulder season this fall to try and bring that up a little bit. This shows that 3% sales tax collection broken down by month. We currently are at 0.5% over 2018. We were budgeted at 0% increase, so we are over our budget luckily. If you look at the graph below, you'll see that January's collections, which is actually December sales, is the largest month that we have, followed by July and October are the next larger months. So, this is breaking down so we can see what sales tax revenue is by the different funding sources. So, as we talk, the blue columns are the general fund, that's 2%. The green columns are the 2015 sales tax fund, the orange columns are the 2005 open space parks and trails fund and then the yellow is the 2019, oh, I'm sorry, that's the 2005 CIP fund. If we look at the gray, last three columns, the gray, that combines them all by budget, what we're budgeted per month, what we've collected per month and whether or not we're over or under that budgeted amount. And if you look at the bottom, as I said, sales tax is about 0.5% over 2018. Right now, we're running about $83,733 over budget currently. So, another way that we look at sales tax is by SIC code. So, there's three different ways that we look at it, we just look at the money coming in, we look at it by the SIC codes and then by area, which I'll show you on the next slide. So, as you can see, our largest sector in the city collecting is grocery and drug. Obviously, we have three grocery stores, three or four, five grocery stores, they have a lot of collection, the second one is department stores. And then, followed closely, if you look at restaurants and taverns, they're at 13.34% of the collections. What's interesting is liquor stores are about 3% or 2.96%. Retail marijuana, if you look at it, we're collecting, it's about 2.99% of collection. So, it has gradually grown, right now slightly larger than liquor stores and that trend continues to go out. Medical marijuana, obviously, has declined as recreational marijuana has come on hand and it's only about 0.3% in our total collections. So, this is the third way that we look at sales tax and this is by area. So, what we have is, we have a map and it's divided into five different areas. We have central business district, we have north Durango, south Durango, other Durango and then out of town. This chart is kind of a little bit different, the column width and the row width relates to the collection. So, as you can tell, January again is the largest collection month and south Durango is always the largest area in collections. And so, it just kind of puts it on a different scale. Internet sales are in the, is in the out-of-town area, so they are shipping in from out-of-town, so they are categorized as internet or as out-of-town. So, skipping from the general fund and talking a little bit about the sales and use tax revenues into the enterprise fund revenues. So, if you look at those revenues, we've spent about, or we've collected about 43.2% of the revenues. Water and sewer fund are off a little bit, we had a cold, wet spring and so those revenues have declined because, or we just didn't generate as much revenues because it was colder during that time. Transportation services fund is up about 11.7% from a year ago and airport fund is up about 15%. If you remember, they went through a large fees and charges, they had a study and they have increased those fees and charges, so you can see that those have definitely increased from 2018. Looking at the enterprise fund expenses, we have spent about 62.5% of the budget for those enterprise funds. And early in the year, we do transfers to capital projects. Water and sewer fund had some large projects, the largest one being the admin building of Actra Truck or the administration building and we transferred those funds early to the capital projects fund so that we can fund those projects as they were approved. So, each of those funds spent about 4 million, just under 4 million if I remember right, that we transferred over to those projects funds. So, you'll see that spending level out as well, once, I mean, that's 4 million is almost half or 50% of their entire budget that they spent in one general entry that shifted over. Transportation services fund is about 15.1% down. If you remember, in 2018, we made some major cuts in transportation services, so we would expect to see that down. expect to see that down. Just a quick snapshot of, snapshot of capital improvements projects greater than $500,000.
That one's hard to read.
Yes.
What? That one's hard to read.
It was. So the largest project, obviously, is the Santa Rita Water Reclamation Facility, has a budget currently of about $15.7 million that is scheduled to be completed this year. We have some large capital projects at the airport. We have a almost $8 million taxiway construction project that is currently underway. And as you remember, we just acquired a parcel out there for about $3.9 million. So some large projects out there. Oxbo Park Trail was, is about $6 million. But as you can see, those are the projects that are moving through, and hopefully, we'll get finished soon on several of those larger projects. So additional appropriations, these are any additional appropriations in the first six months that have come to City Council for approval. Most of them in the general fund are related to grants, several different grants on the police department. We've had several appropriations at the airport for the terminal project, and then for the land acquisition as well. But as I stated before, those that come to you are more capital-related, emergency-related, as in the water and sewer fund. Water line replacement that you guys just approved in early June, that's an emergency sewer repair that we did not have, or water repair that we did not have on the books, and so we needed to come to you. So the departments will monitor their regular line items and make adjustments between the line items and not, and live within their appropriation level, instead of coming back to council on those smaller line items. So we try and limit what we come to you to capital grant revenue that's coming in, or just those extenuating circumstances on some projects that need additional funding. So looking at budgeted fund balance, so this is taking how we ended 2018, so 2018 are actual numbers, our appropriated budgeted revenues and expenditures, and what that projected fund balance will look like at the end of 19, if all revenues are collected and all appropriations are spent. More than likely, that is not going to be the case, it is never the case. But this is where, if we collected all those revenues and we spent everything that was appropriated to us, this is where we would end up. And so this is for all the different funds that we have in the system right now. So, I would take questions answered, or, yeah?
Great, thank you very much. Couple of questions. One is, will you be sending this to us?
Absolutely, and it'll be on the website first thing in the morning. But I can email.
Julie, mail it to us, please.
I can do that as well.
And if, if possible, I realize this might be a timing issue, would it be possible to get the information sometime before the meeting so that we can look at it before, this is our first time seeing it? That would be my other.
Absolutely. The monthly report before, before you go through it?
Right, like maybe just this morning, even, right?
Right.
So that we had a, you know, a few moments to look it over, because it's really hard, as you said, there's a lot of numbers.
Right.
And a lot of pretty colors. So it's a little distracting, but I would love to have a, just a couple of minutes really, so I could understand it a little better. But I really appreciate this, thank you.
Julie, this is really helpful, thank you. And where on the website, just for people like, might be viewing or listening, how, how would they find it on the website?
Absolutely. So if you go to the website, you click the departments tab, and go to finance, under budgets and financial reports, there'll be a link right there that says June financial report, and all of, you know, January through May are already out there.
Thank you. I actually have a specific question, but maybe I'll, it's about the library.
Yeah.
I saw that they were at 51% of their expenditure, and I remember from the study session, the issue around the library with its needs, with its server and whatnot. And so I was just curious, and this may be a question for the city manager as well, is there opportunity now for the library to address that situation? Short of an additional appropriation?
I, you know, we have, we had an H-back unit go out of the library that was not planned for, that Sandy was able to make some shifts in her budget. I think it was about $20,000 if I remember. So I'm not sure there's a lot of room currently in her budget without an additional appropriation, unfortunately.
You talk about the software upgrade, or, yeah?
Yeah, the IT loss.
Would there be, just a question for the city manager, would there be savings in any other department that could be used for that purpose?
Well, let me restate the question. You're asking, would there be savings in other departments that could be contributed to the library expense? Probably not. I think what we're going to see as we get into the fall is a real tight budget. We're only, sales tax is only at 0.5. I'm hopeful this retail season through September is going to be strong. And I, I don't think the, I don't think the possibility we'll be there to find that much money from savings in other departments.
Okay.
I might ask also, is it appropriate to, Rob from Peter, Pay Paul, and specifically on the library being a joint use?
Well, if it's, if it's all within the general fund, we, we can do that. And I, I think, we'll keep an eye for that opportunity, but I, I would say, all the departments have items they would like to spend their savings on that would be brought to my attention immediately upon asking them to contribute to the library. So the library's not the only department that has set aside priorities to balance the budget.
So is, if, if revenues don't increase and they actually start to drop, is there a Plan B for expenses?
Well, the, the revenues that Julie just reported on are exactly, or a little bit ahead of where the budget's projecting them.
I understand that. But if that changes in the next two months, and then actually we start dropping behind, is there a Plan B for expenses?
We, we always adjust based on the revenue projections, yes.
And the actual revenues?
Absolutely.
Okay. So if that were to happen, we would know that that was, that that was happening, and we would know that you would be adjusting your expenses accordingly?
Absolutely. We look at it every month, the, the directors, I look at it, Ron looks at it, and we make adjustments. So if sales tax comes in pretty flat in July, which is one of our largest months, or it comes in flat or even negative, then we're going to make adjustments at that time. We're not going to wait three or four months, we'll start making them at that point.
And, and we'll, we'll be informed about it so that we can also be worried about it, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
If you wake up tomorrow and there's a fire, be worried.
Right.
There is a fire, I was notified by the fire service, there is one up on Missionary Ridge right now.
Again?
Yeah.
Again?
Okay, well, Ms. Brown, thank you so much. And just to reiterate to the community, we will be doing these monthly reports once a month. We recognize that we have a very complicated budget, and we are taking an effort to take this opportunity to increase transparency, openness, and educate the community and the council as we go throughout the year. So if there's any questions that arise, please do let us know.
And I, I want to thank Ron, too, for.
Yeah, and thank our city manager, please, as well. So with that, we will move on to the review of the consent agenda, please. This is, just quickly to the community, this is, this part of the agenda is intended to allow the city council by a single motion to approve matters that are considered, considered routine or non-controversial, and we will have no separate discussion of these items unless a counselor removes an item from the agenda. Maybe, yeah, go ahead.
Item 5.1, approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of July 9th, 2019. Items 5.2 through 5.5 are discussion and possible action items. 5.2 concerns resolution R. 2019-28 authorizing additional appropriation to the general fund for the Colorado Department of Law post grant in excess of the amount budgeted in the 2019 budget. 5.3 concerns resolution R. 2019-29 authorizing additional appropriation to the general fund for the Colorado Department of Transportation High Visibility Enforcement Grant. 5.4 concerns implied consent agreement for sewer service to 2317 County Road 203. 5.5.
Nope, that one's off the consent agenda.
We just removed it.
Okay. And item 5.6 is final approval of ordinance O. 2019-17, amending section 4-3-1-3 of the City of Durango Land Use and Development Code, adopting by reference the revised City of Durango Storm Drainage Design Criteria Manual, July 2019, and declaring an effective date.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Do we have any counselor that would like to remove any other agenda items tonight from the consent agenda?
I apologize for taking that one off earlier.
Oh, no problem, no problem.
It's enthusiasm.
I was excited, sorry.
So therefore, we are, do we have a motion then to approve the consent agenda items since we, we will discuss 5.5 at a later time?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Phillips, can we have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Counselor Noseworthy?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Bettine?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Broke?
Yes.
Mayor Yousaf?
Yes.
And I'm assuming someone will come get me?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so moving on to our removed consent agenda item number 5.5, do we have any counselor that would like to talk about that item since it is removed?
I, I think the purpose of my removal was just to allow Counselor Baxter to recuse herself, and I have no other issues.
Make a motion to approve item 5.5 on the consent agenda?
Second?
Further discussion?
No.
Ms. Phillips, can we have a roll call?
Counselor Broke?
Yes.
Counselor Bettine?
Yes.
Counselor Noseworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Yousaf?
Yes.
Great.
Great, Kim. Yeah, thank you.
Oh, thank you very much. Moving on to public participation, this section of the agenda is set aside for the community to make comments, provide comments, or ask questions to issues that are not otherwise on the agenda. When I call you forward, if you could please join us at the podium and state your name and address clearly. We are limiting comments to three minutes, and at two and a half minutes, our city manager will raise his hand to let you know that he, that your time is almost out. We don't mean to be distracting, but we're trying to run efficient meetings, but we very much look forward to hearing what you have to say. And with that, can we please have Felicia Landsberg Meyer join us, please?
Thank you. Hello, everybody, I'm Felicia Landsberg Meyer, I'm with Durango Play Fest.
Oh, great.
I'm here to tell you a little bit about the festival, and also to highlight, hopefully highlight, the importance of the arts to the economic vitality of Durango. So we're a week-long festival of new play, new play readings. We bring nationally-recognized playwrights, actors, and directors to Durango for a week to workshop new works, which we hope will go out to the broader audience nationally so that Durango can be a voice in American theater. And we started last year, we grew despite ourselves because it was a successful year. I think many groups went back to New York, to Los Angeles, and talked, talked about it, talked about it to their people. And we had, we have a group from New York coming this year because they've heard about how great it is and how great the experience was. So we are growing, and what, just more about the festival, the actors and directors and playwrights work these new plays for a week at venues in our community, the Animus City Theater, Durango Arts Center, and the Henry Strater Theater. And it culminates in a, in readings for a ticketed audience. And we work hard to engage the community by having them attend free workshops with the artists during the week, playwrights' panels, we have a great festival party, and also talk backs after the readings. So we have a really dynamic, fun-filled week, and we work really hard to make an enriching environment for the artists and the community. Some of the high-caliber artists that are coming this year, Dan Loria from Pitch and Wonder Years, Wendy Malik, who you've met before in Durango, some of you, I'm sure, from Just Shoot Me. We have John Tenney from the movie Tombstone, and he was also in The Closer. And we have a woman, Emily Swallow, she's from Supernatural, and many more. We have 25 artists coming who are going to eat here, and sleep here, and buy things here, and come, go back to New York and LA and tell all their friends to come to Durango. We have good relationships with businesses in the community. We're working with Mercy Hospice House this year, we're partnering with Maria's Bookshop, we're doing an event at Animus City, Animus Chocolate Company, and we're partnering with Henry Strater, and Rochester, and many more. And we just are very excited about this, this event. It's coming up August 5th to the 10th, and I hope you'll all come and see what it's about. They have, I don't know if I can, can I pass you?
Please, yes.
Okay, so I have a schedule of events, and community events are on the back, and anybody have any questions?
And where can the community get information, again?
Durangoplayfest.org is our website, and.
Felicia, could you talk about the relationship with FLC?
Sorry, I left FLC out. I am a professor at FLC, in the theater department, and I left them right off my, my presentation. So we have a strong affiliation with FLC. I've got five interns working with us, building this festival. And last year, Dan Loria was a guest at the festival, and I brought him up to my acting for camera class, he worked with the students. Lee Blessing is a Pulitzer Prize-nominated playwright for his play, A Walk in the Woods. He brought his new play, he's bringing his new play this year, and he'll be a guest artist in our theater department in January. I'm going to direct his, one of his plays, one called Two Rooms. So we're just trying to really integrate the artists that are coming to the festival with, with what's happening up at FLC. So that's one of our, one of our goals. And we're also working with the, the Office of Alumni Relations to create, to bring more alumni back to Durango and get them excited about coming the same week of Play Fest, so we're creating an event for that group.
Great.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for the update.
Yeah.
We appreciate it. All right, with that, moving on to public hearings. We have one legislative and policy-related hearing tonight. These are opportunities for the community to provide formal into it, into, formal input into our decision-making process, and we've intentionally structured these to be open, transparent, and fair hearings. We welcome all public testimony, just so long as it's relevant to the issue at hand. We're going to hear from our city staff, we'll see if there's any public testimony, we'll have questions from council, hear from, see if any staff has a response, and we'll have a motion from council. We're looking at item 9.1.1, which is a public hearing to consider an ordinance amending chapter 19, article 3 of the City of Durango Code of Ordinances, to grant authority to appointed police service technicians to enforce the municipal code. With that, can we hear from staff, please?
Maybe the chief of police can come up, I can't open it.
Yeah, it's not opening on mine either.
I, I had to, I had to log out and log back in.
Really? Okay, well, we'll try that.
Once I did that, it worked.
Okay.
Please join us and fill us in.
Here.
While, while we're logging out and logging back in.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, counselors.
Thank you.
Are we ready?
Yes. If you could just, yes, please.
Yes.
If there's any specific questions in regards to what this amendment would be, please go ahead and ask. Essentially, what it is, is our police services technicians were designed, it was a program that we had back in the 80s, early 90s, that kind of dissipated away. Most agencies across this country right now are reinventing this type of program, based on the fact that certified police officers are extremely hard to find. They're hard to recruit, they're hard to retain, and there's quite a bit of certification that goes along with them in order to have them, have the abilities to serve their communities in an efficient manner. So the police services technician is essentially going to relieve some of that pressure so that the certified police officers can use their skills at a higher level to serve the community. So they're just an enhancement to what we do, they're going to be able to free us up, be able to free the certified officers up to be able to go out there and basically problem-solve, hopefully, and react to calls and be able to respond to them in an appropriate manner. What I heard last week from council was there was a question in regards to what exact ordinances were going to be enforced by the, the police services technician. So in response to that, if I may pass this out to you all.
Sure.
This is a member Adam prepared by Mayor Demop, at my request, because again, this is a developmental position, and we've been working with, there was a loss to be global, and we're to decipher exactly what those responsibilities are going to be, and the duties are going to be shaped by the officers and the technicians themselves. So if you'd like to take just a minute to review that, I could certainly answer any questions that they may come up with.
So are these violations that you'll be enforcing, are they additional from what your police officers have been enforcing in the past?
Well, police officers, they enforce state statute, or state law, essentially, and traffic code, so both the 18 code out of Colorado realized statutes. traffic code, so both the 18 Code out of Colorado, realized statutes, 18 Code, 33 Code, which comes out of Division 1 of the Code, these are all state ordinances. These are charter ordinances here, and that's what we're hoping the police services technicians will be able to write. They're not going to be able to write state violations, but they will be able to write charter ordinance violations as a response to the change in the code. So, some of these, yes, they are. We have the authority to go ahead and do that, and what this will do is this will allow the officers to go back out again, but it's going to be, have the autonomy of those police services technicians to be able to do this on our own without direct oversight from a certified officer.
Right. But are any of these ones that a certified officer previously couldn't enforce and someone else was doing, or was it?
No, we can do these. And there is some redundancy. There's some redundancy that goes into the parking division. There's some redundancy that goes over into animal control, to our police officers, and to code. And redundancy is actually a really good thing because especially with limited staff times that everybody has, and we have two, two code ordinances, or two code enforcement officers. I'm not sure exactly how many parking officers we have, but they're limited in the scope of what they can do. They can't, they can write parking tickets, but they can't write summonses into court. And some of the parking violations that come about, like boos, so-and-so forth, there to appears, those have to be written by a certified officer. So, instead of having a police officer respond, now we can have a police services technician respond. And this helps us better serve the community in a more expedient manner and during hours of operation that other, other departments may not be, you know, working at the time.
So, essentially, it's also a cost-saving mechanism?
Absolutely. Yeah, that's, that's the big premise behind this, is, you know, we, we can pay somebody, you know, at a lesser rate, you know, than it would be to file that certified officer and be able to take their time.
Chief, do you anticipate any enhanced level of enforcement relative to some of these issues? I would pick out violations of checkers, 16 noise, for example. I know we get a lot of, we get emails about stuff in the city. A lot of times, it's, you know, mufflers, motorcycles, loud noises from bars, restaurants, this kind of thing.
Right, and we're, and we're going through a training development program right now in anticipation of some of that. That is a very common complaint. Quality life issues are the ones that obviously come through your emails and your voicemails as much as they do mine, and they're the ones that take up a lot of our time. And, yes, this, we'll be able to direct specific staff persons to the police services technician program to enforce some of those things. Not all of them, because mufflers and traffic stops, the police services technician's not going to be able to do. That'll still be in reliance upon, you know, the certified police officer. But if there is noise ordinances coming out from the bars, parks, you know, other areas that may be providing amplified noise, we're going to be able to direct those staff to those locations to be able to deal with that appropriately.
That's great.
Absolutely.
More is better.
More is better in that regard, yeah.
And that's a big thing, is the quality of life issues that these guys are going to be able to help address. And those are things that unfortunately, right now, we're having trouble prioritizing because we have much bigger problems, you know. When Exxon's being robbed, we can't go stand out there with a decimal reading for a specimen, specified amount of time and read what that noise ordinance is going to, how it's going to pretend.
Would this position be available for members of the community engagement team? Or?
Community engagement team are, they're certified officers.
Okay.
And once we get through our staffing woes at the moment, hopefully, we're going to be able to reinvent that program. We're trying to keep it alive by distributing that amongst our patrol officers with some of those initiatives, but we're not as focused as we need to be, and we just can't right now. We are just too short-staffed right now to be able to do that. We're barely keeping up with our calls for service. And this, this is certainly going to help, and we have one guy that's in training right now, and, you know, once we get this authorization, he'll probably be able to hit the street probably next week, if not two. And then the second position is in a final psychological phase right now, and then they'll go through about a two or three-week orientation program, and they'll be able to get out of the field as well.
Great. Further questions from council?
No, thank you.
I don't believe we have any public testimony for this, correct?
We do not.
Okay. And no further questions? So, I guess I would look to council for a motion?
We're pulling it up here.
I can make a motion to conduct a public hearing to consider public testimony, is that the?
Yeah.
And therefore, thereafter, direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance amending Chapter 19, Article 3 of the City of Durango Code of Ordinances to grant authority to appointed police service technicians to enforce the city's municipal code.
I think we did just conduct the public hearing, didn't we?
We did.
So, that part of it?
That's what, yeah.
Yeah.
So, you were directing?
So, you direct the city council attorney?
I have, then, so moved, I would direct the city attorney to the aforementioned.
Second. Any further discussion? Okay, we have a roll call, please.
Counselor Noseworthy?
Yes.
Counselor Bettine?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Broke?
Yes.
Mayor Yussif?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it. Okay, moving on to item 12.1, administrative discussion, discussion and possible action concerning a motion to convene in an executive session to determine manners relating to potential purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, or sale of real, of real property specifically related to Durango Silverton, or Silverton Narrow Gage Railroad as permitted in CRS 24-6-4024A. Do we have a motion from council, please?
Well, I would like to make a motion to move into executive session, but do we want to do council reports and actions prior to that?
We would need a motion to move that on the agenda if we want to do that. Doesn't?
Oh, item 12, council reports and actions is?
So, the, the one I have here says that it's after.
Oh, very good. Well, then, that's, my motion stands.
Well, just, people will have to wait, excited. They'll have to be very excited and anxious for our discussion to come. Do we have a second?
Second.
Or, did you make a motion?
Could I maybe suggest the city clerk could leave if?
If we moved that?
If you take care of the council reports now.
Fine.
Because there's no decision anticipated after the executive session.
Well, okay, then I'll make a motion to move item number 12.1 to follow item 13.
How about following item 14?
Okay, following item 14.
Second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Bettine?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Noseworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Broke?
Yes.
Mayor Yussif?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item 13, council reports and actions. Councilors, anyone have an update they'd like to share?
Sure. So, as you know, next Tuesday, there's a study session for the rate study, for the utilities rate study, and unfortunately, I will not be here, but the Utilities Commissioners did a great job working on this. They're excited to bring it to you, and they will be here in the audience and would not mind being invited to say something if you're interested.
Okay, thank you for that update. I appreciate it.
So, would it be an agendized item, or we would just bring it up? It'll be an agendized item?
The rate study's on your study session, and sometimes when you have an advisory board, you invite them to the table or to participate.
Great. Well, they asked if they, if they're, if, if the city council would be willing to hear from them if they had, they had questions or they had something?
In addition to staff.
Mm-hmm.
Perfect.
Yes. That's the only report that I have.
Thank you.
I went to a couple of meetings last week, the bid, where the Creative Economy, the Creative District spoke, and I found that very informative. They'll be, I think, probably trying to arrange some presentations either to us or other groups, so that was very useful. Chris, you might want to talk about, but I went to the Parks and Rec, and that was quite interesting with some of the planning that they've been putting together. And also, I went to the Utilities Commission because I wanted to get more insight into their thinking, and just want to recognize all our volunteer members who serve on boards. Thank you.
Yeah, I will mention that because the Parks and Rec Board went through this very exhaustive review of how Parks and Rec Department actually plans for their kind of 20-year time horizon on their capital projects, and it was pretty fascinating. It's something that will be posted online, I believe, in the Parks and Rec Department. I was looking for it a minute ago and could find it readily to give you a link, but really an interesting process that they went through, and in terms of transparency, it was great, I think, for board members that were there to sort of understand how far in advance they're really thinking about these tax dollars and where they might fit in and how the, the tax dollars really flow from one year to the other. There were many community members there as well that I think got further information on how that process might work. It was really illuminating for all of us, I think. And then I also wanted to mention the, the Chamber of Commerce Board, which I'm on for the council as well, agreed to be a member of the Civility First pledge today. So, they're going to post that on their door, and they've actually decided to, to not only join that cause, but to sort of take more action relative to it in terms of having an event around it, and then thinking about how they can support it going forward in the future so it's not just a one-time level support. So, I thought that was really cool.
That's really great to hear.
Madam Mayor, could I interrupt?
Please.
Counselor Noseworthy mentioned the Creative Economy Steering Committee. They are scheduled to have breakfast with the council on August 8.
I might say that, yeah, last week, we had no Library Board Commission meeting. They are on sabbatical for the summer, will resume in August, and I regret, Thursday, I'll miss yet another Airport Commission meeting because last month, it was CML Conference. We were all in Breckenridge, and this month, we're having a.
Retreat.
Retreat, and so, be two, two commission meetings in a row that I'll have missed, but they're doing great work. The construction is underway out there, and dollars are being spent fruitfully.
Excellent.
And can I just clarify something? It was the Creative District's group that spoke at the, not the Creative Economy.
That's right.
So, I missed spoken that.
They're getting out, they spoke also at the Creative Economy Commission.
Right.
So, they're really doing the rounds, which is great. Just to let the community know, we spoke about this last week, but as, as was mentioned, we have two full-day retreats starting tomorrow, Wednesday and Thursday. They begin at 8:00 AM with breakfast. Our meeting starts at 8:30, and we go until 5:00. It's at the Rec Center. Tomorrow, we are talking about city council goals, and the next day, we will be talking about our evaluation system for our three appointees. These are open, public meetings. Anyone is welcome to attend. We will be taking minutes and recording these live, and it will be on our website, but I would encourage anyone to attend if they're interested. I also wanted to let you know that I am holding office hours next week. I'm going to do this on, you know, and I think as an as-needed basis, and I will be holding them next Monday, January 22, at 12:00 PM, 12 to 1:00 PM, here at the city manager's conference room in City Hall, and anyone is welcome to join me. I will hopefully see some people there. And with that, we'll move on to future potential agenda items. Any, any potential agenda items, council?
I have one. I would, I'd like to have a session on recycling, you know, how it works for us and for the community to hear, and particularly with the changes in receiving recycling material that countries have made. So, I, I think that would be a useful, for the community, to learn more about it, and I know I would benefit from it.
I think I would, too. I would, I would absolutely enjoy that. Council thoughts?
Are you suggesting a study session or an agendized city council hearing?
If I could suggest.
Yeah, oh, go ahead.
If I could suggest, a study session would be helpful where we're getting information and having dialogue about the program and.
I agree.
Learning more. I think things in the recycling world are changing rapidly, and I, I agree, that might be a good idea, just update everybody on, on what's going on and what the future looks like.
All right, if we could add that to the calendar. See if we can get that on. Anything else?
I had a couple.
Yes.
One of them that I, in reading, I don't know, one of the news things that we get sent on Fridays, Mountain News or one of those, there was a mention of one of the cities that was doing an increased tobacco tax, and it made me start thinking about the capability of implementing tobacco taxes, marijuana taxes, and alcohol taxes, and whether or not that's a possibility for our city, and what the nexus there might be as far as what the, what that money might be spent on is, is transportation a logical thing? And I can see how for marijuana and alcohol, yeah, there's definitely a nexus there. So, I was hoping that we could have a, a time that we could discuss whether or not these are legal for us to do, what process it would take if we were interested in doing it, the, all those kinds of things.
Can I, I can respond to that right now. We are prohibited from having a special tax on alcohol, and on tobacco, I think it was Aspen, there may be other cities that have followed. A state law was passed where a city can agree not to take their share from the state tobacco tax and enact a local tax. So, you could enact a tax at a rate that may be higher than what people had paid in, into it in the state, and then that would be the discussion for the council, and there's, there's pros and cons on that, and that's a good item. And we've, we've tried to do an excise tax on marijuana, which has caused me great fatigue. But if the council wants to go again, I would, I would say that you need to be prepared for standing room only in here, and if you want to make the manager a target, that's, that's what I get paid to do, but.
I don't think the intention is for anything to make you a target. The intention is to have a conversation about, is it something that we might want to do? Is there rational nexus for it? And I, I mean, we're struggling right now in our general fund, and I can see that this could be a possible way to help in some areas, and if we decide not to, we decide not to. I mean, that's, I just thought we should have a discussion about. So, I would like to be able to have that discussion.
In a study session format, are you suggesting?
Yeah.
Another informational, educational, I think you just updated us a little bit wrong, but, you know, more information like that would be helpful, I think, just to.
We should probably discuss the excise tax again, then. We're going to talk about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think it's good to bracket these things, like, you know, the, the, the staff's always been really good about suggesting how much revenue could be derived from a, from a effort like that.
Yeah.
And is it worth the effort?
Absolutely.
And, and.
The whole conversation, absolutely.
The business licenses comes to mind in terms of.
Oh, yes.
Missing, catching a mice and missing the elephants, you know, that's, that's one.
I agree with you.
But I'd like, I'd be interested in that, I'm sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Could we put tobacco and marijuana on the same discussion?
Yeah, of course, yes. So, one of the other things that's on our list but hasn't been scheduled yet is the role of the advisory boards, so I would actually like to see that get scheduled. And partially, what's bringing that up for me is I had a conversation with James Casey, our judge, about the Ethics Committee relationships. So, how do we create a situation where the Ethics Committee is not relating to a body that the Ethics Committee might actually be investigating? And so, he and I had some conversation about doing it outside of the municipal umbrella, if you will, and he had some recommendations about that, so that's, I would really like to get that, since it's on our list, but it's not scheduled, I'd really like to get that scheduled. And then the one other thing I wanted to bring up was we had talked, I, SCAP had written a letter about having more interaction with city council, and I had suggested the possibility of a liaison. So, not only would I like to discuss that with SCAP, but also, we had discussed that we would do one with FLC coming up when the school went into session. We're getting really close to that, so I'd kind of like to preface to make that happen. So, um, that's probably also a decision factor, but it's, you know, also a discussion. I don't know if that would be better for a city council meeting, so we could just say, no, we don't want to do it, yes, we want to do it, whatever.
We have the Executive Committee that meets with, regularly with the, with the, uh, the mayor, president of the college, and other members. So what entity or would you suggest we engage with?
Just the student body council.
Student body council?
Yeah, which I, when I went and spoke with them during the election campaign, it was very, very interesting and very informative, and they, they loved it, and they would love to be engaged. And I think it's a good way to communicate with the student body at a different level[1587.24]